Uh, what's what?
She runs the show.
We're live.
Rachel?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Okay, Rachel, will you call the order, roll call and establish a quorum from the City of Perkins, regular meeting Tuesday, June 10th, 2025, 6:00 P.M.
I will. Your order is on?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Ron.
Yes. All right. Item Agenda number two, stand for prayer, please. Father, we just come to you tonight and we ask your blessings upon the decisions and hopes that are made here tonight that each and every one of us would make the correct decision to help our city grow and prosper. We thank you for the growth of our city. Father, I pray that you would bless each and every citizen within our community. And I pray you hedge your protection over our city staff, Fire Department, Police Department, and our city. In Jesus' precious name, amen.
Amen.
All right, for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we are now going to move from the city meeting. We're going to open our Perkins Industrial Development Authority so that we can take a look at information there before we need to take a look at it on the city agenda. Rachel, roll call. Call it, establish a quorum, please.
Mayor?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Sarah?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Renee? Rhonda?
Yes.
Okay, so do you have a quorum?
We do.
All right, item Agenda number two. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve Resolution 11-2025, approving and authorizing amended Article IV of the amended Declaration of Trust of the Perkins Industrial Development Authority dated May 13th, 2008. Rachel?
Would we like David Floyd to talk to us about this a little bit? Would that be all right?
That'd be fine with me.
Good evening, thank you guys. This all ties in with the second agenda item that you have, which relates to issuing debt on behalf of the Public Library Project. We would like to use the Perkins Industrial Development Authority as the vehicle to issue that debt. However, on review of the trust indenture, when you look at the purposes of the trust, there's not clear explicit authorization for PIDA to fund educational, literary, library-type facilities. Now, in reading through it, I feel comfortable enough that we could do it without this amendment, but since we had the opportunity to have this meeting tonight, I think they would just be better all around. It's an overly cautious method to amend the trust indenture solely to add one paragraph related to the purposes of the trust and give explicit authorization to issue these bonds for a library. So you've got this agenda item here, and then you'll see on the city agenda there is a counter item that accepts the modification, and that's just the city as the beneficiary accepting the revisions to the trust indenture. Happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
So, I read over both trusts, and what Mr. Floyd is saying is just a... What's the word I'm trying to... It's not just technical, because I'm very comfortable with what he said, that yes, it would be legal to do it just the way it is, but we can cover all the bases and make sure we're protecting ourselves, the city, and everyone involved here while possibly making changes here and looking into taking on that. So, I can't remember which article it is. Article something, something dash C.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 11-2025, approving and authorizing amended Article IV, amended Declaration of Trust of the Perkins Industrial Development Authority dated May 13th, 2008.
I second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Sarah? Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
And Rhonda?
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
How excited are you, Ron?
Hey, I've been at some schools.
All right, this is a big one. It's okay, this is a very important one tonight.
Mayor, do you want me to do it?
Yes, I'm gonna have Ms. Rachel read item Agenda number three, and then we'll go from there.
Number three, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve Resolution 12-2025, approving and authorizing the incurring of indebtedness by the Perkins Industrial Development Authority, herein the authority, to be accomplished by the issuance of sales tax revenue bonds, notes, or other evidences of indebtedness in one or more series on a tax-exempt or taxable basis at a premium or discount in the aggregate principal amount of, not to exceed $700,000, the bonds, for the purpose of financing all or a portion of the cost of acquisition, construction, equipping, renovating, and improving certain public library facilities for the benefit of the City of Perkins, Oklahoma. The city. And paying costs of issuance related thereto, waiving competitive bidding in regard to the sale of said bonds and approving the sale of said bonds on a negotiated basis. Approving and authorizing a sales tax agreement by and between the city and the authority pertaining to a year-to-year pledge of certain sales tax revenues. Approving and authorizing the officers of the authority to take action, execute, and deliver all documents necessary or convenient in connection with the issuance of the bonds, including but not limited to a bond indenture, a preliminary official statement, an official statement, a federal tax certificate, a bond purchase agreement, the bonds, and all other instruments and/or certifications necessary or convenient to effect the transaction. Approving dispersments of the proceeds of the bonds. Authorizing the bonds to be designated as bond qua... Excuse me, bank-qualified with respect to Section 265B3 of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986. Designating a trustee, registrar, and paying agent. Authorizing the issuance and securing the payment of the bonds. Selecting professionals and taking of other actions with respect thereto.
Right, 'cause she slows down. I'm like... Ma'am, did you have any comments you wanted to add to that?
I do not, but again, I'm gonna defer to David to tell us some stuff.
This is the resolution that sets up a sales tax revenue bond transaction, and these are very common. We do them all over the state all the time. Because of the debt limitations that are imposed on the city, the city cannot go into debt in an amount that exceeds 100% of its assessed valuation in any one given year. So we utilize a public trust to do that, in this case, PIDA, because PIDA does not have the same limitation. So there will be a sales tax agreement that's entered into between the city and PIDA that provides, on an annual basis, for sales tax revenues from that specific tax that we passed last year for the library to be passed over to the authority. The authority will then issue its bonds using those sales tax collections as security and as the source for repayment of the bonds. Once the money comes in, that will then be used by PIDA acting through the city to fund the renovations of the library. This is not city debt. There's no pledge of the sales tax past any individual year. And so all you're doing from the city side is saying, in this fiscal year, we're gonna hand this sales tax revenue over until the bonds are paid off. We're looking at a nine-year financing for this. You are voting to waive competitive bidding on the sale of the bonds, and there will actually be a separate vote for that. But that is just with respect to the sale of the bonds themselves. And the reason that we do that is sales tax transactions are a little bit less secure than like a general obligation bond, where you just throw it out to the market. Everybody understands it's an ad valorem assessment, and the banks can accept that and go on. On a deal like this, we bring in an underwriter. We waive competitive bidding, sell the bonds to the underwriter initially, and then they go out to the market and find the best rates and terms to sell the bond to other investors. But it allows the underwriter to kind of tell a story, and that can generally get you a better result than just a pure competitive sale would. So we're authorizing the waiver of competitive bidding, the entry of the sales tax agreement, the engagement of professionals for the financing, which will be Stephen H. McDonnell and Associates as financial advisor, Floyd and Driver as bond counsel, and DA Davidson out of Norman as underwriter. We're authorizing the mayor and the officers of the authority to sign any documents that they need to sign and take any other actions that we need to take in order to make this transaction go forward. Happy to answer any questions?
Sales tax, that's the whoa we had.
Yes.
Okay. I was initially reading this and my brain was... Okay, it was...
This is a way...
It clear... It clear... He just cleared it up, so...
So, yeah, this is a way for to use that sales tax... And it's kind of... It's kind of in a protective bubble when you can put it into the trust. Is that correct? Kind of a generalized statement is kind of in a protective bubble when you can put it under the trust and not the city taking on in the tired.
Yeah, I was just initially, when I first read it last week, I'm like, are we having another... It's increasing that when you said last year, I'm like, oh, okay, it made sense.
And it's just the quarter cent that was voted for the library. This doesn't bring any other quarter cents that get to the part...
Makes sense.
And it like gives some checks and balances, all those entities that he talked about, making sure all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted.
And we don't have it on the agenda tonight, but at some point, we're going to have to rework the lease, because the library is currently leased to the library trust, which doesn't have debt capacity. And so we will have to rework that lease to give PIDA an interest in the library itself, and then we'll just lease it back to the library trust so that they can maintain and running the facility.
Well, this is kind of one of those things you talked about three years ago that you like to see PIDA be more involved in the development of city things, programs, entities, and like, and not just have it sitting there and transferred.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Working.
'Cause it, I mean, it's very broad, written very broad. And so I'm understanding what... I think where your head was when you were talking about it as far as... But it's how we're gonna get there. So I think this is a good venue to get that started. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 12-2025.
Where's Risto?
I will refer to Rachel for those further comments. I second it.
A yes-no vote on the...
Yes, and...
Second, and a yes-no vote on waiver of competitive bidding.
Okay, good. Sorry, I just need to make sure I knew what I was doing. All righty, so, Mayor?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Sarah?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
And then, they were saying we need a second...
We need a motion and a second and a vote on the waiver of competitive bidding with respect to the sale of the bonds to the underwriter.
That speeds things up for us, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion that we... Say that for me again.
Waive competitive bidding...
We waive competitive... We waive competitive bidding in respect to the bonds.
Waive competitive bidding with respect to the sale of...
Sale of the bonds.
I'm so sorry, did you make the motion?
I made the motion and Vice Mayor... Second it.
Okay, Mayor?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason? Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes. Yes.
Was there another one, David?
No, ma'am.
This was on the city part.
Next one will have three, yes.
So, item Agenda number four. I make a motion that we adjourn the Perkins Industrial Development Authority special meeting for June 10th, 2025.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes. Yes.
You didn't flinch, darn it.
You didn't hit it hard enough.
I don't know, she was writing. Tried to be nice. Okay, we are gonna move back to the city Perkins regular meeting. Start with item Agenda number four. Consideration, action on consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda.
I second it.
Sure did. Justin? Just willy-nilly, Justin? Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Number six, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve the vendor contract with Root Control Incorporated in the amount of $299,643.90 for the City of Perkins sewer line replacement project funded by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Community Grant CG 20F 80501-0. Mr. Bob?
Well, this has been two or three years in the making, probably, but we are at the point where we can procure services to do the sanitary sewer line evaluation, which is gonna evaluate all of our sewer lines with eye tracking, which is infiltration, how much water, groundwater, whatever's getting into the sewer system through manholes or defective lines. We will do some cammering of all the manholes, 3D mapping them. So if there's brick manholes where the grout is worn away and water's coming in, we can put that on a list, and there'll be smoke testing and things of that nature. So we'll stand up with a comprehensive overview of the sewer system, and at the end of it, we get a document that prioritizes the issues, which is the scary part of this.
And then there's also their... Came in, and so that leaves us a little bit of change in case financial things change.
Yeah, there's a little bit of change there, but the way the grant is structured, it pays for city employees' time in dealing with the grant, and we also have a grant writer fee. So it'll be pretty close, but it came in right where we needed it. And we're using a purchasing cooperative called the Houston-Gallaston Area Council that we have an agreement with. They have competitively bid all of this out to the specifications of the EPA previously. So we're just... Part of this, we're jumping on the HGAC contract essentially. So all the federal and state procurement guidelines are met, and staff would recommend approval.
Their report and projections and their pictures were pretty thorough and amazing.
Yeah, and this is a company we work with now. We have an existing relationship with them.
We just, when we dealt with them earlier, we just, as a city, couldn't afford that foam, that coating at the time to go into the lines. But this will help us really detect where maybe we could spend...
Yeah, so where, you know, if you replace these three lines or whatever, you're gonna get the biggest bang for your buck as far as infiltration or clogged lines. One of our biggest issues is infiltration, because during rain events, our plant gets inundated with flow that shouldn't be coming in.
Looks good to me.
I'll make a motion to approve contract with Duke's Root Control, Inc. in the amount of $287,703.90.
Oh, it's gotta be this one.
We updated.
It's the amended one.
for the City of Perkins sewer line replacement project funded by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Community Grant CG 02F 80501-0.
I second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. And didn't you say that was Senator Inhofe that helped us to get that?
Yes.
That much money?
Yep, yep. Senator Inhofe put that into play, and then it was approved in the congressional budget, and then we had to apply for it. Through the EPA and jumped through about 97,000 hoops.
Well, thank you for those hoops. And I actually, next time you jump through hoops, could you please videotape it? Item Agenda number seven. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to accept amendment of Article IV of the amended Declaration of the Trust of the Perkins Industrial Development Authority dated May 13th, 2008. And so this is what we covered already for the... For PIDA?
Yes, ma'am.
This is just the city as the beneficiary, accepting the amendments that were made to the PIDA trust indenture.
Commissioners, any more questions?
Motion to accept them. To approve amendment of Article IV of the amended Declaration of Trust of the Perkins Industrial Development Authority dated May 13th, 2008.
I second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number eight. All right, Mr. Lawyer, do I need to read all that? I will, because we wanna stay legal. I'm gonna move on.
Do you want me to read it?
No, I'll read it. I'll just try to slow down. Number eight, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve Resolution 10-2025 of the City of Perkins, Oklahoma. The city approving and authorizing the incurring indebtedness by the trustees of the Perkins Industrial Development Authority to be accomplished by the issuance of its sales tax revenue bonds, notes, or other evidences of indebtedness in one or more series on a tax-exempt or taxable basis at a premium or discount in the aggregate principal amount of, not to exceed $700,000, the bonds for the purpose of financing all or a portion of the cost of acquisition, construction, equipping, and renovating and improving certain public library facilities for the benefit of the city and paying costs of issuance related hereto, waiving competitive bidding in regard to the sale of said bonds and approving the award of the sale of said bonds on a negotiated basis. Approving and authorizing a sales tax agreement by and between the city and the authority pertaining to a year-to-year pledge of certain sales tax revenues. Approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of all documents necessary or convenient in the connection with the issuance of the bonds. Authorizing the bonds to be designated as, quote, "bank-qualified," end quote with respect to Section 265B3 of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986. Approving all other actions of the authority at its June 10th, 2025 meeting and declaring emergency.
Okay, this is you all as the governing body of the beneficiary of PIDA giving your approval to the issuance of debt by PIDA. If anybody wants the history of why you have to do that, I'm happy to give it to you. But it's a requirement when a public trust issues debt. You are also approving by separate vote the waiver of competitive bidding with regard to the sale of the bonds by PIDA, so the same action you took before. There's a few documents and certifications that you'll have to sign in your capacity as mayor. We're authorized in signing that. Since professionals were hired by PIDA, not by the city, you do not have to approve that. You are doing a designation of bank-qualified under 265B, which you also did as PIDA, and the reason for that is if you are a governmental body that is going to borrow less than $10 million in any calendar year, you can designate the bonds as bank-qualified. And what that does is it allows banks to take an additional deduction on the carrying cost that they have for the interest that they are earning off the bond sale. So it makes those types of bonds more attractive to a larger sphere of buyers, and it allows the underwriters to kind of reach out to some smaller banks that might not ordinarily participate, because it's now more beneficial to them. The last item, and this will also be a separate vote, is you are declaring an emergency. The reason for doing that is it gives immediate effect to the resolution, and it allows us to proceed immediately with negotiating the sale of the bonds and going ahead and getting this transaction rolling. So happy to answer any questions you guys have.
The declaring emergency makes the paperwork roll faster.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Very good explanation.
Yes, sir.
I've done it a couple times.
I'd say so.
Definitely not his first review.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 10-2025.
I second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Rhonda?
All right, the next motion is for the waiving the open bidding.
Yes, ma'am.
So I make a motion that we waive the competitive bidding in regard to the sale of said bonds and the approving of the award of the sale of said bonds on a negotiated basis.
Perfect.
Second.
Waive competitive bidding in regard to the sale of said bonds and...
It's not in there, but in approving the negotiated sale of bonds. That's the motion.
Justin, was that you who seconded it?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
I felt there for a second. I was channeling Commissioner Abell for a little bit.
I make a motion to declare this an emergency.
Do we need to state the resolution on that?
Yes, we do, just...
I'll make a motion to declare Resolution 10-2025 an emergency.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Number nine, consideration, discussion, and possible action to appoint a city attorney. Mr. Ernst?
So we received a total of five proposals for city attorney. I don't have anything negative to say about any of them. There isn't anything negative to say about any of them. I think all of the fees and rates came in very close to each other. Professional services, you don't necessarily go with the lowest. You wanna go with the best. And I was excited when Floyd and Driver, David Floyd, submitted a proposal, because we have worked with him as bond counsel in our financial matters for quite a while. I don't know, several years? Six or seven years.
2019.
Yeah, he has associates in the firm that have worked with other municipalities like Norman for 18 years. So Floyd and Driver submitted a proposal, and that's who I would recommend hiring contracting with.
So Floyd and Driver are the ones that gave us permission to spend our money and carry our money?
Yeah, I hate to... Yep. All of them.
The Kirk Street Bond issue, that's where we started.
We also did the sale of the retirement home.
That's right, Red Hill.
So out of... I mean, I... There are some very good applicants in here. I agree. Floyd and Driver are very familiar with city staff and very familiar with the City of Perkins and the way it's being operated right now. Commissioners, any comments, questions, or motions?
I'll make a motion to appoint Floyd and Driver as the new city attorney.
I'll second that.
Mayor?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Veronica? Yes.
I should not have...
You gotta make a bar.
You could've voted no, it wouldn't have hurt my feelings. Thank you all.
Thank you for showing up last minute for us here, too.
Happy to do it. We enjoy working with you guys.
Number 10, consideration, discussion, and possible action to acknowledge ore construction contractor pay application won in the amount of $9,500 funded by the Oklahoma Water Resource Board American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded for the joint Iowa Tribe of Oklahoma and the City of Perkins sewer lift station project utilizing ITO funds.
This is the first payment on the lift station project.
Hey.
That just needs approval. It's been approved by engineering and staff.
So this is just a payment?
Yes.
Yeah, OWRB requested that all pay applications be on our agendas, even though right now the money's not coming from us, but it's coming from us.
Right. Thank you for including the... I mean, we've looked at it, we've seen it before. But thank you for including the contractor application, so it shows the money. Commissioners, anybody? I make a motion that we acknowledge and take action on the ore construction contractor pay application in the amount of $9,500 funded by the Oklahoma Water Resources Board American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded for the joint Iowa Tribe of Oklahoma and the City of Perkins sewer lift station. and the City of Perkins sewer lift station.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number 11. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve the City of Perkins purchasing policy.
I didn't end up with one of each. I should be able to answer. They have me questions about the purchasing policy at all. I'm really excited about it.
What we talked about last month where we had the red...
That was the purchasing...
Changing stuff.
Correct. So, that changed our code. Sort of added some things in and brought it up to date. We're really not changing anything we're doing. Everything that we're doing has not changed. But now it's all in writing, and that's very nice. The purchasing policy and the internal control policies are both really good ideas on their own, but just never had, had time to do them. As part of the EPA grant, they're a requirement. So, that was good. So, that sparked us to get some things done. So...
While we're, it fits under this agenda. I, I want to thank you for being there on Saturday morning on your time off and helping me understand a few things and talking things out. So, and then on top of that, getting things ready for this meeting. So, I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Commissioners, any questions on the policy? Comments?
Make a motion to approve the City of Perkins purchasing policy.
I'll get that.
Mayor?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
In the second half of this, I'm assuming Rachel is number 12. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve the City of Perkins internal controls policy. Just an extension of that one.
Same thing, yeah. The, the internal controls really, really focuses on checks and balances. Who does what, you know? For example, I don't take money. I don't even have access to actually enter money into the receipts management program. I keep my hands out of the cash. People who do the cash don't turn around and balance the checkbook, that type of thing.
Well, everybody's favorite words, checks and balances and transparency.
This is already stuff you're already doing. It's just putting it in the...
The only new thing in either of those is the signature stamp. That is literally the only new thing. And, and if you saw, we also have checks and balances with that. It has to be kept locked. You have to initial it when you use your signature stamp, and it may not be used on checks ever.
Cool. Commissioners, any comments, questions, or motions?
I'll make a motion to approve the City of Perkins internal control policy.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
All right, number 13. Consideration of adjourning into executive session is authorized by Oklahoma statutes Title 25, Section 307B4 to discuss a pending investigation, claim, or action where disclosure will seriously impair the ability of the public body to process the claim or conduct the pending investigation, litigation, or proceeding in the public interest, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. So, I make a motion that we adjourn into executive session.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Veronica? Yes.
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you.
I had a question.
It's like your shirt.
I'll bring the Ouija board.
Said.
Okay. Justin, you do the... Thank you.
Okay, reconvening in regular meeting. We will take no action tonight on agenda item 13. Going on to number 14. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to review letters of interest and select a candidate for the Board of Adjustment. One open position term ending June 30th, 2028. We have none, so no action. Moving on to 15. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to review letters of interest and select candidates for the Library Board. Two open advisory members, terms ending December 31st, 2026. You get two?
Before the agenda.[1513.31]